Right, it's seven o'clock on July 16th. We have a hall. I will call the meeting to order. Roll call please.
Fish is absent. Joel?
Here.
Clayton?
Here.
Graymire?
Here.
Cortinson?
Here.
Charles is absent and killed.
Here.
We have a quorum. The first item on the agenda is a proposal from StanTech for possible RTC reconditioning projects. Obviously, requests an action to the council to consider updated proposals from StanTech to rebid RTC tower reconditioning activities using remaining state funds. But then I will turn it over to Clara Beck.
Thank you, Mayor. In your packet, you have an updated proposal from StanTech. On your desk, you have an even more updated proposal from StanTech that considered a fence that goes around the entire structure rather than just building one, which is what they call the tower building. Basically, the price tag for the design and engineering before the bid process goes up with some of the additions that have been added since our last meeting, including the elevator, more understanding of the HVAC system, et cetera. So, the cost that they have proposed to bring this proposal out for bids so that we can get some updated pricing on what projects that the RTC could cost has gone up to a not-to-exceed amount of $61,900. They also provided you with a proposal for mold remediation, and that cost was $8,900. So, the request is simply to consider whether or not this is something that the council would like to do. It would essentially be a fact-finding mission for you to determine what costs could be incurred should you choose to do some stabilization or envelope work at the Kirk ride. As the mayor mentioned, you would be pulling from state funds that have been appropriated from the state legislature. There are about $390,000 left. We would obviously want to get final okay from the state before we would go ahead with any actual activity out there, just to ensure that those grant funds would cover the cost of activities. I've had a little bit of back and forth with Elle from Deed, who does our grant management, and she said that it's possible that the fencing and the elevator, that kind of work may not be covered by the grant, but she thinks that most everything else would be. She said they take a pretty broad view of what counts as stabilization and things like that. So, we would have some conversations with the state just to make sure that costs are covered. But I'm happy to try to answer any questions. We don't have anyone from StanTech with us, but I can always take questions back.
Thank you, Clara. I mean, for me personally, I don't think there's point in spending money on the elevator study just to maintain an elevator. Is, you know, I don't know if people noticed in the package of the day, just the license for the one in the senior center was almost $1,000, and there's some work being done in there. So, you know, if we do that, I feel it's just a waste of money because we're not going to be able to maintain it unless we do all the other things. That's my personal opinion on that. I mean, it would be a nice idea, but also I think it's going to be an improvement to the buyer, should there be a buyer, which I think is why it wouldn't be eligible for the state funds. The other thing is, do we have a quote from or on the 3D scanning to know what funding we would have available?
No, we don't have a quote yet, but we could get in there soon if we get something put together.
But I think that would be a good use of some of the remaining funds to kind of get an idea. I mean, it could be used by anybody going forward as a mechanical 3D.
I can certainly ask to see if they consider that an eligible cost.
Yeah.
That may not be either.
Yeah. I mean, it would be something that would help the developer going forward.
Yeah, and I know they've put little roadblocks up in front of us on that before that, because the funds aren't for the development, it's just for the preservation and stabilization of the building.
If we approached them first on it, could we argue that we're getting that done to help figure out what needs to be stabilized?
Yeah.
I mean, if we do this in the right order, maybe we can argue that that is part of looking at what needs to be stabilized. And to me, the fence could also be argued that's keeping the building safe from intrusion, and that could be part of stabilization too. I mean, it might be part of how we present the package.
Yeah, yeah, and she didn't tell me.
Right, I get that.
I didn't hardly know on any of these items. She just said we wanted to know more about what the intent is of the activity.
I mean, we have enough kind of break-ins in the building causing damage to the building that we can document, say, an eighth got electrified, raised by a top fence, but house spot there.
Electrified.
And now we've got a quote for that.
It was the mayor's idea.
We put a fence around West Ecast, right?
And we did.
And I believe that was covered. So, I think the state already did say that that... Now, will they say that the rest of it? We don't know, but the one we did put up was covered, so that's a good sign.
Yeah. Any other... Anybody else got questions for Scott?
Just another comment as far as the point of it all. We haven't mentioned access, and I think that was one of the things that was a real priority for HBC. It was just wanting to find a way that the public could be given the opportunity to access the space, get in and see it in a safe way. And so, the primary things were mold, get down and make it a safe place where people can come in. And whether or not we did the elevator, whether or not we did fencing, or some of these other things, I think the point of those questions is mostly just find out how much of the cost, and we end up with this menu of choices, and then we can go from there. So, I don't know that whatever increment it is to, you know, include the elevator, for example, into this bid process is a significant one. Once we get the actual prices back from them, then we'll have something that we can choose to do or not do. But I think that the list that's been provided for us ought to all be included. And just as a note, when you were introducing this, Clara, at the beginning, you said it was 61, but the paper says 63,006.
That would be accurate, with the full fencing into the...
Okay. That's it, thanks.
Some points?
Yes, I appreciate your time. Can you clarify for me what the $63,000 is giving us exactly, so I know?
Yeah, they noted that it's the not-to-exceed amount for design and bidding services plus reimbursable expenses of printing and mileage, which is $1,200.
Okay, so we... There's no work being done on RTC?
No, no, no. At this point, this is simply you either deciding whether or not you want to call for bids, and then from the bid process, you get the pricing back. That's our goal, is to get the pricing for all of these activities, and then you can make a decision from there.
So, I want the residents of the city to know, and so I know for sure it costs $63,000 for someone to give us a bid, is that correct?
That is correct. For StanTech to do the design and bid services, it is $63,000.
Has StanTech ever given us a bid in the past, and has it been $63,000 to get a bid? What's the amount been? Has it been that amount? I'm new to the council seven months, but to see a bid of $63,000 out of our 390, that's alarming to me.
I will let Angela know.
Maybe I can just help on the process, Councilor Morrison. So, StanTech is an engineering firm, so they're... For them to do that work, they're going to put together a set of plans and specifications and, you know, get into RTC and do that work, then they're going to put the process out for contractors to bid the project. So, that's what we would be getting back from StanTech, our bids from contractors to do the actual work in the building.
And StanTech's been involved in this building for a long time, is that correct?
I believe so.
So, does... I'm asking from an engineer's standpoint, does $63,000 sound like a high amount to you for somebody that's been involved in RTC for a long, ongoing process to come back and look at some things? To me, it does, but I might be naive to the process. That's all I'm looking at is for the taxpayers and this money. We have 390. We're going to lose 63 right away just to get a bid. We're down to 330. I want to use this money as best that we can, and maybe this is the right way, maybe it's not, so that's why I'm asking the question.
Yeah, it depends. I didn't have a chance to look at what they would be providing, but it could be a decent amount for what they're putting and getting us to be able to bid out. It takes a significant amount of work.
Can we power that on? I mean, is that crazy? I mean, it does... I think Councilor Morrison described it as a lot of money of what we have left of the kitty. I mean, have we... StanTech is a metro firm. I mean, I know they know the building, but do we need someone that knows the building to this level, or could Moore do this at our project rate, or something like that, where we could be moving right 30 to 40? I mean, I'm just asking the question. It is a lot of the money of a limited kitty.
Yeah, we always can do that. We can have a discussion with them, sit down with them, and have them walk through why these are what they are. That's perfectly fair to do, and in question why these are what they are, we can do that. From a more engineering standpoint, that isn't an expertise that we have in council. We will find somebody else to help us do that.
Thank you for answering that. That's the part I wasn't sure.
I mean, is there a way we can narrow the scope if you... I mean, just so that, you know, is the scope too broad that we're asking for as opposed to just sort of saying... Because it's an additional 8,000 for kind of molds that makes it like 72,000, 73,000.
Yeah, I would say that, you know, when we talk about the elevator, for instance, that's going to add cost for what they're trying to do, so if we took that out, it should be less than what they're talking about.
You can always go back to the original proposal quote, which I think was, what, 12,000?
Yeah.
Do you have that here, so we can know the difference? We don't have it. We can send it out?
It just seems like a lot of money for what you're getting for a company that knows that building probably better than any of us sitting here. And, you know, it's like a mechanic that knows a car, keeps coming back to him, but they know what's going on. And I find that we keep throwing money. Believe me, I'm a supporter of the RTC, but this is getting ridiculous with fees like this, in my opinion. I think we're going to get... It's not nickel and dime, it's hundreds of thousands of dollars that's going out for money, and we have to be very careful with this. And I just find that really hard to believe that these people don't know that building better than what a $63,000 proposal is. So, I'm very frustrated with that.
Actually, I don't know that it matters whether they know the building or not, because what they have to do is design the system. They have to design this ventilation system, they have to design the electrical systems and stuff. This isn't going into a place that is functioning and turning it back on. This is going into a place that's empty and creating something new. And so, I think it might be worthwhile to suggest another option, you know, maybe to have more do it, for example, and maybe they can do it for less. But I think that getting a list of pricing is the point, and to get the pricing, how to create this new stuff. We can't really move forward on choosing what to do until we have prices for what those things might cost.
I agree with Scott. What happens if we have them only take it to print drawings, specifications, provide PDF copy, and we do the bidding in-house? I mean, is that insane, or we have Moore do the bidding? What if they do everything to the spec level and we do the bidding in-house?
We would want them to do it just because the bidding process is the contractors are going to be coming in. They have a lot of questions during the bidding process, and that's where StanTech is going to have to be involved to answer those questions.
I think giving a list would be helpful. I agree with Scott on that.
This might be directed to everybody. Like Elle said, I believe in the RTC, but I don't know if there's a final goal here other than to spend the last money we have from the state. But I have a bit mold survey remediation. Why couldn't the city just go find a mold company and get a bid? Go to Dakota Fence and get a bid. Not to take anything away from engineers and architects, but go right to the source and have them come in and did it. Let them come to us. They're the people who are in the business of remediation or ventilation. I don't know if we need someone to did it. And again, I don't know if the result will be based on this work. Are we going to be here again next year?
I mean, that's the... I mean, that is one of the issues, is that this funding, you know, technically goes away in the end of the year, so if it doesn't get quote-spent, you know, today, then it's gone.
Would it be impossible for the city to go to these various industries and get direct quotes?
I think for the simple things, like, so I just have a fence, if I can see that from the outside, it's capable.
I mean, mold ventilation, the mold remediation, ventilation, interior cleaning, if I was in the business, I'd kind of give you a quote, just a point of view. Save the $60.
Your Honor, one last comment, and also, I would encourage more engineering to help us in any way that we can in this process to do this. I agree with Mr. Leighton. I think if the city has the ability to do some of these things on their own, I would encourage that. I think the bigger question for the council is, at least in my mind, is that I'm preparing down the line is, let's say StanTech came back and said it's a $1.2 million deal to do all the HVAC and do everything and do this, is this city prepared to, you know, spend 1.1 million to do it? That's the question there. You know, if you get the bid, are you prepared to do it? And that's further... That's the bigger question, I think, for what we have, and that's where I'm at.
So, I think, obviously, we need to kind of make some form of decision on what we would like to do. Clara, your comment?
Yeah, so, I do like the idea of sitting down with StanTech and really kind of going through what is the 63, what's going to make up all of the $63,000. Gives us kind of a better idea as to move forward, and I would also like to see that first proposal that was, you know, significantly less than what we have in front of us right now.
I'm sure that StanTech has a task list of the time and effort that would go into doing the different pieces of what they're looking at.
I think that would just help us, as we're looking at the list here, you know, when we're talking about that, you know, the elevator. Okay, is it, you know, how much is that piece?
Yeah, and it's $1,000 if on tape, it's $10,000.
Exactly, right. I just think that's helpful as we are making this decision.
So, let's be, on Monday, when you take actual action, let's be very clear about what you're asking Morton to do and what you're asking from StanTech, so that we make sure that we're bringing back exactly what you want.
Guys, I would encourage the meeting with StanTech, even if we're trying to before Monday if we can. And also, I think I would say, is this your firm number? Can you guys take a pencil to this, and can you whittle it down so the council would like to see this done? We recognize how much work we've fetched in the past on this building. Like, let's take a pen to paper here and figure out where we can trim some stuff here and come back and more reasonable number. I don't think that that's rude, I think that's prudent.
And if they can break it out as to like, you know, what, you know, the task list to sort of say that, you know, it is $10,000 for this, it's $20,000 for that, so it's almost like a bit of an aleckar. They obviously can be there because they broke out the $8,000 for mold remediation, then maybe then hopefully on Monday night, and council can say, yeah, we want to do the mold remediation, we want to do the HVAC, we want to do the fence. Do we need them to do the fence?
Sorry?
I mean, do we really need them to, you know, possibly break it out as to what the cost is on the fence?
Too bad.
I mean, that's...
We can get a quote from Dakota or Moore or anything.
Did we have an engineering firm the last time we fenced, or we just do?
It was part of the project.
It was part of the project.
Okay, so...
I follow, Your Honor. I follow Mr. Mortensen's position. You know, at the same time, send it a million dollars, what are we going to do? So, I think, in addition to giving these, if you take estimates and detailed information, these points seem to be prioritized. We've got two, four, six, seven, eight units. Mold remediation could easily be $500,000. What are we going to do?
Probably nothing, unless you want to fund it, because you've only got...
I spent all my money last night.
You've got $300,000, so...
Does having the package number help us be more grant-ready though, too? If we have the numbers and something comes up, is there a value to having the package numbers so we can be grant-ready for outside sources?
Yes.
Right, okay, so, we'll see what we can get between now and Monday. The next item on the agenda is the Heritage Preservation Commission update, and we will call upon the one and only, and one, give it up for Chris Shulkin.
We're off to a good start. So, thank you. Good morning, everyone. So, I'm Chris Shulkin, the chairman of the Heritage Preservation Commission. I guess, as far as anyone in this room, I've been on the commission as the historical society professional representative to the commission for many, many years. So, I just wanted to give a little background. I don't think we've really done an update or background of the work, purpose of the Heritage Preservation Commission, and certainly if you have any questions or comments, I'll make just a few brief presentations, and then we'll just open it up for questions. So, the Fergus Falls Heritage Preservation Commission was formed in 1974. Okay, it was the third city in Minnesota to have an HBC after Minneapolis and Roanoke. And the HBC basically acts as an advisory capacity to you, the city council, on preservation of the city's historic buildings and assets and resources. Fergus Falls currently has 13 buildings on the National Register of Historic Places, each supported in their efforts to reach national register status by the HPC. And we also act, besides being, you know, an advisory capacity, we also act in an educational capacity. So, one of the things, in 2011, as an outreach educational thing, we came out with this listing of historic buildings and a self-guided tour for people of buildings in downtown in Fergus Falls. It's called The Coming City. So, that's at no cost, it was paid for by grants, and these are free to have, so if people want to... We've got boxes in the list that we're trying to get. So, that's that. The other thing that the HPC did a number of years ago was a booklet called Building From the Past. That's another very popular book. It is for sale for $795, and it's at the Historical Society, Building From the Past. So, those are kind of part of our outreach activities. The other thing is, some years ago, the Heritage Preservation Commission applied for and received Minnesota Certified Local Government Status. And this allows us to apply for grants and for funds related to preservation work. The latest, I don't know if it's the latest, but certainly the largest grant we did was to hire Pigeon Consulting to conduct an architectural and historic survey of downtown Fergus Falls. That's this, I think you've seen this over the years, and that is a required step in our effort to designate downtown Fergus Falls as a nationally-registered historic district, which we still are trying to pursue. So, with this little background in mind, what have we been doing lately? What are some of the activities that we've done over the past several months? Well, one of the biggest projects is we are currently working on plans to clean and restore the George B. Wright statue in anticipation of the statue's 100th anniversary next July. It was installed in July 1926. Of course, George B. Wright was the main investor in the development of Fergus Falls, and as it says on the statue, his faith in the coming city of Fergus Falls established it as a thriving regional center. So, we are at, and I can guarantee there will be no cost, direct cost, to the city of Fergus Falls on that restoration work. We have applied for some grants, we're waiting to hear from a foundation, and also privately funded. So, we will be using a product called Enviro Clean to basically take off a lot of the patina and atmosphere staining that has been on the statue, and the features and script are really quite word right now, so in anticipation of next year's anniversary, we want that looking really nice. The other thing, a couple months ago, we observed National Preservation Month in May, and we sponsored a public walking tour of historic downtown Fergus Falls. We worked with the Historical Society on a new exhibit called Honorable County and the National Register, which is up at the Historical Museum, and we also helped sponsor an exterior tour of the state hospital. And I just want to say that, especially that state hospital tour, I averaged up over the years that we've done it, we've done now about 15, 16 tours, we did an average of like 95 people to tour, so, which is really amazing. There's unlimited interest in that facility. We also, for the first time in a number of years, we reviewed a building permit just recently for the 1930 Barnard mortuary. We worked with, again, with Councilman Kwame on initially exploring the options on the best way to use the remaining state hospital funds from the state. We advocated for an amendment of Minnesota's historic tax credits to make them more usable. Three members, and the commission and Clara, attended the Preserve Minnesota Conference in Red Wing, and again, all costs to that conference were covered by a grant. We also, I would still have to say that I continue to serve on the Minnesota State Review Board that reviews all Minnesota National Register nominations before they are submitted to the federal level for final approval. So, just for your reiteration, here are the members of the council, if I can read Clara's handwriting, we have myself. Scott Demartelair is our historic architect, he is on the council. Lois Stosserson, Paul Nelson, is it Tiffany? Tiffany Schaper, Brad Sunday, Ben Underwood, and Mike Walls is our ex-officio member. So, the HPC is, you know, anything that deals with historic preservation is often a lengthy grueling process, but I think that we're quite active as a Heritage Preservation Commission, and we are working diligently to try to preserve our historic resources in our community. And I will open this up for questions or comments.
Any questions of Chris?
I will loosely say, I'll give you a couple examples of how preservation has worked for our community, not just aesthetically, it's a focus on, you know, disabled buildings, but economically. Number one, a number of years ago, I don't know if there's anyone here that remembers this, but the city was ready to tear down the Cabot's Hotel. Remember, the hotel, Cabot's, it emptied since the 1970s, horrible. There were holes in the roof, you could stand on the floor and see sunlight, on the ground floor, and see sunlight coming down. While we really worked diligently and got a drastic effort to save that building eventually, and now it is a very much a functioning part of our community, art gallery, apartments. And then the second project is just happening right now, is the Red River Mill. I mean, I never, my wild dreams, thought that mill would ever be restored. I mean, it's been empty again since I came to town in 1990. So, that is going to attract... So that is going to attract people to our community. And I think it gives an example of if you find the right person, the right vision, the right resources, that anything can be done. And it's just an amazing project. I think it's something our community should be very proud of.
Questions, Mike?
Mayor Hicks, yes, sir. Your honor, I appreciate it. Chris, first, I want to thank you for your service to all, all things old in our community. It's, it's awesome and I appreciate it and.
Is that a compliment or? Myself too.
We're not, we're all getting older. I don't want the council to know, and definitely not my parents to know, but I used to chase the pigeons out of the Cadets Hotel. We used to run in there as a kid and you'd see through the floors and you like run an adventure in there until you could chase every pigeon out the window. So hopefully, hopefully they're not doing that today, so I appreciate it. But the, the main question, the council member that I have for you today is you, you brought up a word that you said nationally registered historic district for downtown. So what does that, what does that do for us as a city? And what does that do maybe to the economic businesses that can go downtown? Is there a negative, is there a positive? I just want to be prepared because I think it's probably a positive for our city to have that. But I also want to know, is there going to be maybe a restriction of what can go downtown in those businesses if you know at this time?
Well, I mean, you really need to hear from the consultant on all the specifics. But if anything on the National Register is really an honorific designation. I mean, in this country, if a building or district is on the National Register or site, it does not preclude a business or an owner from doing what they want with their building. So it does help, it, it will help the community, you know, market historic downtown because we've been talking about that now, revitalization, revitalization of the downtown. So it's really, I hate to use the term marketing, but it's almost a great marketing avenue for our city of Fergus Falls to market. City, downtown Fergus Falls is a historic destination for people. And yes, it does add a layer, hopefully, of protection, not necessarily legally, you know, we can't tell people what to do with the building. But they will have in the back of their mind before they want to put pink polka dots on or slap metal siding on a historic building, that this would give them some thought, you know, before they would do that. So again, it doesn't preclude people from doing what they want, but it does provide some mental roadblocks on it. So we cannot do a historic district unless we have approval from, I don't know what the percentage is of the owners, of the seventy percent of the downtown owners. So we haven't gotten to that process yet. And of course, I think the city has, you guys have to, the city council has to approve. So what we will need to do is some education and outreach for this.
How close to that are we? How close do you think?
We, we, this study basically determined that the downtown is eligible for that. And so now we just need to take the next step, which is the actual process of submitting a nomination.
Our intent as an HPC, I'm a staff liaison for the HPC. Our intent as a committee would be to probably get a grant from the state in order to do some of those outreach activities, so we could host some events, do some mailings, things like that. We don't have a grant in place right now, though.
Any other questions of Chris?
This is something I've wanted to do for decades, so I'm hoping that before I finally exit.
Your honor, thank you. Chris, if there is such a thing as a nutshell, what's your view on the Regional Treatment Center and what should be done?
I'm not giving up hope on this state hospital at all. And I think what needs to be done is to find, at least, you just can't say that it's, you know, this is for sale. We need to specifically kind of recruit potential developers. Like, and I think if one part happens, if it's just part of Easty Patch, part of Westy Patch, the tower, I think that will start attracting more interest. And I think just one part, it's not going to be done all at once. I think this is an all at once project, has to be done incrementally. And I think it's still there, but the longer it stays empty, the longer it's shut up. You know, with no ventilation, no heat, no environmental controls, it's going to be harder to do. And the cost is going to go up. But, you know, thanks for the rhetoric, I'm not giving up on that. I'm hoping you guys come.
Yeah, and I'm, I'm new as well to the Regional Treatment Center, but I've read back, this has been attempted to be marketed many times and it hasn't, it just hasn't closed.
Well, it's been a long history on that, right? And.
And I agree with you, as long as it stays empty and it just deteriorates more.
I think one of the, there was a, there was a housing group, was it Covenant Housing they called themselves? That was the most serious and I think well-intentioned effort, which for some reason they did not get a grant or tax credits for their housing.
Minnesota housing.
To Minnesota housing. But then they never tried again. So I think if that could happen, I think they just want an Easty Patch too, to start with. And I think, I think some kind of housing is, that's what our study recommended was, was housing. I think that definitely is the way to go. Because again, I think it could be a destination for people, a variety of excuse, on housing.
I agree, it's an attraction.
It truly is. Absolutely. If people from all over, you know, Fargo, Minneapolis, St. Cloud, I mean, all over the region come to these tours because. And I think the other thing is a part of this project with the remaining funds that Councilman Kwame was talking about is to somehow get some access so we can renew some tours, maybe, at least on a limited basis. Those are unbelievably popular. And, you know, for reasons, we, we continue to get, how many requests over the years do you get? For movies, for photographers, for weddings, for ghost hunters, or whatever, I don't care. Maybe set up a fee structure that gets some activity going on.
In summary, what I hear is mole remediation is probably a priority so that you can actually open access to the public or whomever.
I think that's the big air quality is the, is the main thing.
I would like to see the studies, if there's such a thing. Oh.
You have?
I don't think so.
Okay.
Thank you very much.
This stood as a platform.
I recall, is this?
More of the history of, of the Regional Treatment Centers, what's been done. Maybe Scott's got some documentation.
That is on our website. There's all eighteen years of documentation of what we've done, every council meeting that has ever been, the RTC that have been brought up it, that is available.
Is there any easy index?
No, it's hundreds of pages. A lot of activity over the years.
Thank you.
Thank you, thank you, Chris.
Thank you.
If you can go, or you can stay and listen to TIP policy discussion.
Okay, I was really counting on having screens so we could go through a draft together, but sorry.
Yep. The purpose obviously was to try to get a, you know, establish a TIP policy. And so the last time we took, there was several, several community that we pulled very TIP kind of policies from. And then we put them through, obviously, ChatGPT to try to bring together, you know, some of the commonalities and highlight some of the differences and nuances of each kind of community. Because as, as expected, no one single community is, everybody is not, not the same. But I think the goal would be to try to establish parameters of what, what are we trying to, what do we want out of this policy? You know, I think the statute's clear on what is eligible, what's not eligible. There's determinations. Obviously, people will have personal nuances about what is and what isn't. But I think those, those are more clearly kind of enabled to be defined. But I think the next piece is for us as a council to sort of look at how are we going to define? What are we going to give TIP for? What is it going to be the duration of that TIP? And is there going to be a maximum amount of TIP that we're prepared to give? I think as much as anything, you know, and the fees that technically we, we charge for it. And I think that's kind of the bigger thing. And whether we can do that today, you know, as such, or whether, you know, we do some form of, whether it's a work session or, you know, create a small subcommittee that then would look at the TIP policy and then then bring that back to council, kind of obviously, you know, their, their kind of input discussion, kind of approval. After you.
Thanks. So we, yep, we got, we have policies. I did a, a, just a very, very basic draft based on policies from other communities, things that are required by statute. I also pulled in our current business subsidy policy. And to be clear, any TIP policy that you are doing does not replace the business subsidy policy. That is a separate requirement of state statute that we have one of those in place. So as a, as a, another activity that we could be doing with our new economic development director when they come on board is updating that business subsidy policy. I think it hasn't been changed since, maybe twenty seventeen-ish, twenty seventeen to twenty nineteen, somewhere in there. So just making that more relevant. But I, yeah, I pulled in some business subsidy information and then also included in the review that I had ChatGPT run, our current application for subsidy. So I have some of that in, in the memo as well, that you can, you can choose to use and build from.
Mike?
I appreciate that, your honor. You know, before I was even getting ready to go, first thing I want to do is I want to thank Mrs. Beck on the work that you did. This isn't just a little small thing, this is broad, this is big. Your honor, I like that you brought up work session, committee, full council, whatever, because I, I think it's that big of a deal, I really do. I think this TIP policy is, it's mysterious, it's, people don't understand what it is. But this is a key component to this city. It's a key component to how this council makes decisions. So everybody is kind of on the same page. We have never been there to this point, at least I don't think the council's ever been there. The other thing that this is hugely important to is our new economic development director that'll come. They need to have a set kind of, this is where the city's at, this is what we can do. Because they're going to be the face out there talking to those corporations that want to come to our city and they need to know this. So I think we owe it to them. We also owe it to every business that's coming to this community. We've got some great businesses that are coming now that didn't even go down this TIP process. They didn't even go here. And they're doing some of the things that, that other businesses will, will look for in the future. So we owe it to them. But we also owe it to our residents of this city, specifically the ones that worry about police, the ones that worry about fire, the ones that worry about roads. Because this policy here dictates if that money goes to someone using it for business or if it goes back to our community, to our fire and police. So this is, in my opinion, if I'm on the council, other than economic development, this is the number two most important thing for our city in so many ways. So your honor, I would love to, to get something together, get us as a group. I think we work the best as a council when we're all together. I, I think that's a must for this, in my opinion.
I would like to basically pack that up as far as working together as a council. I think, you know, I work with, looking towards an economic person here that we're going to go after and hire and make things successful. We all, basically all agreed on that. Also too, I think when we work together, that's one example, another one would be the bigger. You know, we all kind of came to the same conclusion there. And at that, those, in those times, we were working together as a council, not subcommittees, not any type of smaller group. It was one big council making these decisions with conversation all at once. And I think that moved faster than subcommittees and then bring that up to the council and then debate it. So I agree with Mike on that.
The only question I have, I think a work session makes a lot of sense and it's very good to go. The question I have posed to the council is not wait, you can tell if the economic development person is on board or do it in advance if they're not on board. I don't think there's a right or wrong answer necessarily, it's just one of that person's intent. And not knowing who that is, the experience they're bringing, hard to answer that question, otherwise. I guess that's the only question that comes to mind from this night.
That was mine, exact question.
Sorry, sorry.
No, well, is, is what are we, you know, where are we at with that economic developer or director, I'm sorry? And, you know, is that a conversation they should be a part of? Or, you know, I guess as a, as a whole here, where are we at with this?
I think the closing for that position is the twenty-fifth of July. So obviously, once that's, once that's closed, we can review the applications, obviously, schedule interviews. And then obviously look to hire. So we're probably, you know, in real terms, at least two slash, you know, three months, wait for the time you actually get them on the ground. And Mike, I mean, I, I hate how you're going to get the cow before the horse or the, or the cart. But I think if we don't have a framework that we're working with, you know, it, because of the process of how the city government works, if we wait for that person to be hired, they don't start until, you know, the first October. And then we start the discussion on TIP, it's going to be December before we get it done. And I'm not saying that, you know, one of the first perhaps tasks that an EDA could do would be to kind of look at the policy. And, and if there's items in there that we need to kind of revisit, we can revisit based upon their input. But I think the structure and the criteria, we don't, we need to kind of get that. Because it will take, it will take debate to get to a consensus.
Probably multiple work sessions.
Exactly.
And so maybe that second work session or before, you know, everything's finalized is when we have that person review it and give us, you know, some, some feedback. Maybe we're too restrictive or not restrictive enough in areas, so.
And hopefully they have experience of working with TIP that they can bring to the table as well. So I, I think, you know, today, without the ability to predict, it can go through some of the, we'll just set a work session. Primal council meeting.
Can we give ourselves ample time? I feel like this is going to, and not that we want long meetings, but I think we need to have some time for discussion too.
Yeah, well, I think if we did, four thirty, we'd definitely go now.
Monday's, Monday two soon.
Monday? Yeah.
We have a report meeting on Monday. We'll find a date.
Yeah, so then maybe the next council meeting then. The next item on the agenda is residential garages ordinance update. Again, so it seems to be like, hello, morning this morning. You know, obviously, the, we did request the city attorney to look at the ordinance and draft language and put in, in the ordinance, which I know Roth sent that out to everybody. Maybe Lynn specifically did it, but it was a memorandum role. Obviously adding language to, to this ordinance. And then technically, you know, the way that the structure works, this, this recommendation goes back to the planning commission for their kind of review and approval when they have, with Clara.
Yeah, that, that was what I was also going to say. So spoiler alert, I am not the city attorney, but I am presenting this for, for this morning. Because I don't charge by the hour. We all put together a draft based on. We all put together a draft based on what he was directed to do by the city council. He sent that out to you. It allows for garages in, standalone garages in the R1 district. He also notes that he received some other definitions, things that were requested, but those were not part of the motion that the council made. So he stuck strictly to the standalone garage issue. He had hoped to receive maybe feedback, some comments on, on the, on the draft so that he could make any further changes before it goes to the planning commission, really to give the planning commission just the most information to work with so when the policy lands back in front of you, that it is what you want it to be. So that's what we're hoping to receive this morning. Is any, any comments, changes to what has been proposed?
What are we going to put on? My only thoughts would be, I don't think we should be changing height based on anything different than what's allowed for a dwelling. If they're, they want a second floor, I guess height-wise, I would say if it's the same with the dwelling and done with the design standards, I guess I don't have an issue not including a maximum side wall pickup, if that might first come.
We could change that to match the rest of our accessory structure code, which is the height of the primary structure, more than 19 feet, whichever is higher.
Yep. So I think we went, my, my memory on planning commission is, is we spent a lot of time looking at heights and, and came to that for solid reasoning. It wasn't a random number, so I feel like applying it evenly would make sense. Does that match your memory?
Yep.
As far as the driveway too, I don't know if it needs to have a paved driveway to the garage, just due to the fact that, let's say, if somebody's going to put a garage on that property and if something's going to be developed later on that property and that, that driveway is maybe in the complete wrong spot, but they had to cook one in, I don't think that's really fair, that they have to have a paved driveway. My driveway is only half paved because I have railroaded and I'm in the city limits.
Maybe the portion, maybe the eight on pace.
Three, four eight on?
Yeah, the eight, you're off the street, paved versus the drive.
One other question, I don't know if that's okay. I'm not exactly sure we need to have size requirements. We don't know, it should not exceed 30 by 50 feet or 30% of the lot area. I guess in my mind, if we're looking at a permeable surface requirement, that is more important to me than dictating size. I think each, each size in each lot is unique, so if we supplement permeable.
Yeah, I think that, and I'm going to try and speak for Rolf here and he can correct me if, if he chooses to. But I believe the intent there was to encourage or ensure that the garage does not take up so much of a lot that a primary structure could not be added.
To me, that's up to the landlord. I guess that, if, if you have the investment and you're putting the money in, I guess, I think that'd be ideal for the city, but I also think that landlord rights, I would be comfortable personally with a permeable. Maybe others feel differently.
I'm doing that with the rules.
It's, it's, the permeable that they're saying should not be bigger than 50% of the lot area. So to me, if we're limiting permeable, in essence, we're limiting structure size too by doing that.
But I'm going to say 30%.
The garage, well, the garage says no. Right, so I mean, to me, we're counteracting, we're counteracting each other here. If we just stick with permeable or one or the other, I, I don't understand the need for both. If we're saying it can't be more than 30, the permeable, I understand, depending on what you use for a driveway structure, there are permeable pavers, et cetera, all there. But to me, just sticking with permeable would be sufficient.
I think that some of the details that we're talking about here are missing a pretty significant point. And that is, this isn't a very common thing. This isn't something that, in my opinion, requires this major change to our ordinance. When this was presented in the first place to the planning commission, they did an awful lot of work already to hear from the public. And the public did not support this idea. The planning commission did not support this idea. Their recommendation was that we make no change. And to that end, I agree and think that we should not be making the change and certainly not getting into all this detail about height and size and permeability and all that. But what I think would be helpful to us is if there was a method in our ordinances that allowed us to do on a case-by-case basis an exception. One of the examples that was brought up in our last meeting was a lot that was particularly small that we rebuilt would, would have been awkward to, or impossible to build a house on for various setback reasons and whatnot. In a case like that, for us to have the opportunity or the ability as a council to approve a conditional use permit or an exception or a variance to this ordinance, I think would be great. And I think that would address the questions that most people have got when they're faced with these kinds of questions. But to just open it up to allow garages to be built with this kind of detail and stuff, I think is the wrong way to go. And so that's my, my two cents on the matter. But if it would be possible to get Rolf to come back to us with something, with some language that would allow for a variance permit process, I don't, I don't know what that is. And I've asked him about it and he said that isn't included in anything here. Right now, there isn't a way for us to allow for any variance or something. So if, if we have that, I think we'd have what we need. If we had that way for a person who applies law or votes for a process on a case-by-case basis, that would give us the opportunity to answer these questions in that way. And that, I think, would be the proper way to go.
I think it would be interesting to hear, we have a gentleman here in the audience this morning, and I don't know if he'd be allowed to speak, but he's been at all these meetings. He's made phone calls, he's very invested in this. And he's a person who probably knows this better than any of us or Rolf does. He's probably done a lot of research on it with any of these changes. Do you have any comments that you want to bring towards the council? Because, you know, this affects you.
Speaking of the city you live. Thank you. I'm Jason Burns. I live here in Berks Falls. Yeah, I, reading through this, I, I think a lot of my comments have been covered. I agree with the comments, it would be a driveway. I think requiring a paved driveway all the way to the garage structure would be limiting for future development of lots or additional costs that maybe aren't necessary for locations that have rental access to the property to then have a paved driveway for the rest of the access. One of the things that I, that caught my attention when I was reading through it, I just saw this last night, so I haven't had time to really dig into it deeper, but Section 8B, building construction materials shall be approved for apartments of Minnesota State Building Code as a primary residential structure and shall be approved by a building official. I have some questions about what that is saying about building construction as well as materials meeting Minnesota State Code for primary residences. Is that just saying that like the property materials need to be used? Or is that also saying that like you need to include kitchen, bathroom, living space and those types of things? That I, I hope it's not the ladder. And I just want to, I want to make sure that it's, it's clearly stated because if it is the ladder, then it feels like we're saying again, you can build a garage if it includes a house. Otherwise, I, I think a lot of what's laid out in this proposal is very useful. I like a lot of what was, what is being popular here.
Thank you. I think the other thing that would also be probably better language in would be that if there was, for example, a new housing development, that, you know, there would be a period of time prior to being allowed, you know, for example, if we, if we develop like the northern property and there's, you know, 40 lots available, you know, it would be nice to see 40 houses and not 40, 40 standalone garages.
Could we accomplish that with tenants on city-owned property?
So, you know, it would be nice to see some sort of period of time of, you know, whether it's 15, 20 years before somebody has built a standalone garage in a, you know, if a city goes to the expense of putting in an infrastructure, you know, the only way that infrastructure gets paid for is if there's housing on there and as opposed to standalone garages.
So city, it would be city-owned property or city?
I think if we're putting in the infrastructure, you know, I mean, if we're being, you know, say, obviously, the development by the RTC, you know, you where the city can basically invest it and put in 3, 3.5 million dollars worth of kind of infrastructure. You know, same say like with the dairy property, you know, then all of a sudden, you know, somebody goes in there and just buys, you know, they buy, they buy one house and then they buy the lot and expose it with the intent that they just don't want to shed on it.
I can't get intent, I'm just trying to figure how to word it in a way that.
It might be easier to word it the time of development and attach it to the title.
Development in agreement.
And that, that would be probably how I would recommend doing it. The other thing we could do is look at it from a perspective, if someone wants to buy the adjoining lot, we force the assessments, even though it's not a primary residence. And I think that could be done through the title process as well, where we say, you know, if you want to buy that other lot, that's fine, but you're going to get the same assessments on that as you are on the house.
Which is accurate. I did, I did check, this is one of the pieces the, the planning commission looked at as well, is county assessor, what happens when somebody builds a standalone garage on a residential lot? It's assessed the same.
Exactly. And we, we could assess the utility cost through the assessment process, even though it's a garage. And we could, they could be aware of that upfront, or we're still getting our money back.
Like, because that would be my only thing, is like, I don't have more of like money into putting sewer water in there, you know, there is going to have to fill up.
Your Honor, I think this should go to the city council on Monday night for approval with a couple of small changes that we discussed tonight that Rolf can take back to Rolf. I respect where council member Tommy is at. I think my gut is that we have enough support to do this. This has been talked about long enough. We have people that are waiting to pull permits. I don't think this is going to be every other lot in town that goes, having to have a garage on it. I think we need to work with our property owners and I respect the planning commission process. I have been there where the council changes their mind on something that comes from the planning commission. And it's not fun to be sitting in that planning commission room and then have the council change their mind on something. But this isn't the first time, it's not going to be the last. I think we've all talked to our constituents enough to know that this is something that's been desired for a long time in the city of Berks Falls.
Your Honor, Councilwoman Doherty, according to Rolf, it completely has to go back to the planning commission.
Oh, that's right, yes, and then come to council. Yes, sorry, yes, you're right.
Councilman Rock?
I would, I would suggest that for a place that's agreeable to most of you, we get back to the planning commission, get that process done.
Yes, yeah, you're right.
For the first reading of the ordinance, James.
Can we, can we get those changes from Rolf to the planning commission so then we're at least at a starting point?
When, when is the next planning commission meeting?
It's the 28th.
So?
So it would be 60 days from when you send this to planning commission, Monday when you vote. 60 days after that, planning commission has to have its final notes to you for approval.
So Rolf can make some changes this week for the package?
Yeah.
Your Honor, I have 3,000 pages on this I'd like to read.
3,000, good year.
There it starts. I agree with Mr. Tommy that this is not going to be a popular thing. It's going to happen here and there. It's not going to go into a new building addition. I will disagree with him that the planning commission came and worked hard on this and that there was more people against it. That's not true. There were people who stood in front of the committee, in front of this council and committee as a whole that, hey, I wanted to do this for years and I, I just built a $100,000 shop just outside the city limits. It is supported by the community. I don't think we need to overbuild this thing. We don't need to over-engineer it. I agree, you don't need a driveway, you don't need it cemented. If this lot doesn't have access and I just want to park, park a boat in it, I don't need a driveway. And I could go on at length here. 30, 30 feet's too short. You put a pickup in there with a hitch on it, 30 feet's not going to work. You want to put your pontoon in there, 30 feet's not going to work. We're over-engineering this thing. Kelly says, hey, we have people who have built, buy the property, they have the property rights. As long as it aesthetically meets the arena, there's nothing wrong with this. Back to my close personal friend, Mr. Levi, he's got a lot that's got a garage on it and you're never going to fit one on there. I would like to get some action on that property where, since it's a lot with a garage already, to allow him variance before all of this work, where he can add on or make an addition to that existing garage. He's already got a garage on it. So what we're doing is looking for a building permit to allow him to increase the size of it. I could go on for the other 3,000 pages if you like, but to give.
I mean, this, it will go to, obviously, come back to the council on Monday evening with hopefully the changes that Rolf gets done. And then we can go on it to send it back to the planning commission and then 60-day process starts.
I, I would like to make sure that the planning commission understands now that this, they do have some direction. I know that there was some comment that they didn't have any direction watching that previous meeting. And I would ask that they proceed with some decorum also. Thank you.
Thank you. Mike, the next item is Surface Water Inlet Protection Plan SWIP, updated by Len Taylor and Dan Disru.
Thank you, Your Honor. We too were hoping to use the screens for some slides. But in picture, Otter Tail River, as it comes through the diversion up at the northeast end of Hoot Lake, flowing through Hoot and then Bright Lake. The inlet to the water plant is at the west end of Bright Lake. And so everything up to the north, close up to Fivert Dam area, I think, is our surface water protection area. So over the last two years, Dan Disru from the Department of Health and Chad Linger and I from the city here, we've been working on this storm, our surface water inlet protection plan. And Dan is going to go through some of the details of it. It's a pretty lengthy document, so I'm not sure if we want to dive into the whole thing, but Dan will read through and watch the podcast.
Thank you, yeah. Two years ago, we were in front of you at that point, we had our source water assessment, which was then submitted to the state for approval. And thanks for your support and providing the evidence and supporting that completion. Again, my name is Dan Disru. I'm with Minnesota Department of Health. I'm a source water protection planner that's assigned to Otter Tail Colony and 17 other colonies in what might possibly be the west district of the state. I am office here at Berks Falls. Guy is here drinking water, protection plan manager. And he is continues as his, as the contact for a bunch of activities in those plans. So the source water assessment was the first step. MDH contracted with Ron Intertek for modeling of where your surface water is coming from, inventorying with the physical setting around it, providing characteristics of the water resources and identifying contaminants or what we call potential contaminants concern. So this process took about a year to develop. It involved county and state and was presented for council action and the city submitted for state approval in May of 2023 that was received. And one of the expectations was that there would be a companion piece, follow-up. This surface water intake protection plan will be developed. So in that, there, as mentioned, there's protection areas that were delineated. There are four protection areas that are kind of nested. The first is kind of the HUPE eight from the intake of, for the city and we call that the source water assessment area. Furthermore, within that, we have the surface water drinking water supply management area, which is typically the HUPE 12 and really is our focus of non-alkaliation sources. And then within that, we're looking at kind of the reaction time, the time of travel to the intake. And we call that the spill management area, which is going to be at the 24-hour kind of notice or concern to the intake. And then we have the eight-hour time of travel, which we have designated as the emergency response area. So obviously, the, the highest. So obviously the, the highest priority for the city is our point sources, uh, those chemical releases that focus on that emergency response area, that spill management area. Uh, the DWISMA, the drink water supply management area, again, that non-point source, that is kind of smaller area that most plans, uh, developed around it. That's where land use, uh, land use planning, uh, BMPs, uh, and mostly outside the city's jurisdiction, but that, that's where the focus. So where the source water assessment was really focused on the what and the where, uh, the SWIP, the surface water intake protection plan is focuses on, on who, how, when. So is it intended to be complementary to other plans? It is voluntary, uh, it is a ten-year plan, uh, intended as once this is approved, that prior to it expiring ten years, that we'll do an amendment and, and recognize it, that there can be changes in the, the landscape, uh, trends will become more apparent, uh, influence of existing controls, if, if you are obvious, there will be new financial considerations to, uh, uh, really consider as well as priorities. Like similar plan development process, uh, through this process, issues were prioritized. The overall goal was identified, objectives to support the goals was, uh, established and, and then we looked at strategies or activities which would be reasonable to, uh, manage the, uh, issues. So most of the identified protection area, again, is outside the city's jurisdiction of, of ours, but, uh, we do rely on those partnerships and synergy with other plans and programs. We developed the implementation tables that were, that you'll find in your packet there and typically they're kind of grouped into, uh, contaminant management, outreach and education, land use planning, monitoring and data collection, and emergency response. And then furthermore, we kind of looked at identifying the project lead and cooperators, estimating costs related to it, assigning year, we kind of looked at metric success would be. So there were fifty-three measures, uh, that were eventually developed for this plan. So again, uh, maybe these activities are already done or underway. So the advantage is if we identify these activities in the plan, it opens up the city as well as the partners to, uh, grants and other financial opportunities. Uh, there is also pro, uh, promise that progress will be periodically, uh, uh, recorded, um, and we do have measure in there that, uh, the partners will be getting together typically every other year, uh, to kind of show progress on those activities. So, uh, we're fortunate that we're standing next to the fin, finish line, uh, we're asking that, uh, the city, uh, uh, action, uh, for approval at the local level here and, uh, again, authorize, uh, similarly for state approval. At that point, you know, we've already had our partner, our state partners, the DNR, the MPCA, Bowser, Heartland Agriculture, as well as, uh, coworkers at the Minnesota Department of Health, uh, they reviewed it, but again, that would be their kind of step to kind of give us the big thumbs up. So, uh, again, the city's plan, uh, was developed using MDH's courts as well as templates that we use, it's not unique to this community, it's also been used for Warhead, Thief River Falls, Bear Bowl, uh, so again, it is, is nothing unique. Uh, again, Guy will continue to be your point of contact, I'll continue to be hopefully available, uh, throughout the life of the plan as far as the sports and those grant opportunities that pop up. And, uh, obviously I have some talented coworkers that hydrologists and other coordinators at the state that continue to help with that. So, again, I've been dirty, but, uh, holding standby, so if you have further questions or comments.
I know in the last couple of years, uh, the dams, I would have power to admit the recertification of all the dams and that there was, and that's a federal process and Burke and all of that is involved. And DNR took some different stands on some different things and had different thoughts on some of the dams, they did end up all getting recertified, recognizing that if that hadn't happened, our water, that would have affected Wright and Hoot Lake significantly along with our river. Um, when that happens again in twenty to thirty years, um, what happens if those dams aren't recertified to the city's water source and would the city then take an active position in making sure those do get recertified? So all the work we've done for our water source is not impacted and I know that's an expense that would be way out there to the citizens right now, but it would be a significant expense if those dams did not get recertified.
Yes, so again, you know, this source water assessment, this service water intake protection plan, uh, really put together starts what is known. Again, there's some unknowns, uh, they've talked about some of those landscape changes in the next years or whatever. Uh, obviously I have my own partners, again, uh, it's, it's a high priority, but, you know, what if, uh, not necessarily, uh, really impacting some of the good measures that starts the protecting, protection activities.
Just want to make sure, people need to be aware of it, because I don't think people understand that that's a big deal for the city of Curtis.
Huge deal. Oops, done something.
The plan that you presented, I think, has got lots of detail and it's very helpful. When you look at the various items in here, uh, for example, the spill response or the emergency response items and the various activities that have been listed for, you know, buying this equipment or doing this process to protect this thing or do that thing, there's prices listed in here for lots of the different items, they can be hundreds of dollars to many thousands of dollars. If we were to have to deal with some event today, I don't know that our budget has a line in it for the surface water end of protection, but if we had to deal with something, you know, some spill around the town, we'd have to pull the money from a water fund or from some other source, I suppose, because I don't know that we have a specific line item for this activity, you know, for this plan. What we're going with this is it seems like we probably need to create something like that. If we're going to fund some of these activities that have been identified as high priorities, do we need to, this is maybe a question for Bill and the staff, do we need to create a space in our budgeting to fund these activities, a place to put the money that we would either accrue or grant money that we would go for or, you know, how would that, how do we want to handle that so that it becomes a part of our ongoing expectations of things that we're going to be paying for, that we plan for rather than just a one-shot, we got a grant for this thing, let's go buy this equipment and then two-year delay, a large price simply for that thing? This is a pretty long list of stuff, it seems like it ought to just get built in for our budgeting and in our expectation. And so I don't expect that, this would be a question that you can answer, Dan, I appreciate your presentation here, but this is maybe something more to throw back to Bill and the staff as to how are we going to incorporate this into our budget and our planning? And, um, I, I would guess you've given some thought to that, maybe Guy, you have, maybe Bill you have, and you'd like to comment on that.
Yeah, it would have to, it would be part of the water budget, so, um, water purification is what this is all protecting, this plan. So we would build some, put some lines in there for some of the energies to cover some of the equipment and some of the other things that are detailed in the plan, just purchase some of that. It's, it's not, it's voluntary, it's, so I'm not looking for the council to act on it right now, I think it's probably something you want to look at pretty closely and then digest it and then probably come back to a council meeting in two weeks.
Yeah, I mean, my question would be kind of like, what is the timeline of our commitment? You know, so, because obviously, you know, it's a ten-year plan granted, which kind of seems like it's a long time, but, you know, if, if, if a certain milestone we've got to reach, we obviously don't want to leave that till year nine. But, I mean, one of the things obviously it starts, it's obviously, you know, about the algae growth in, kind of, Wright Lake, um, you know, that could be potentially costly to treat ultimately, but, but likewise, is that something that we should be looking at? And I'm assuming obviously with the adoption of kind of a, this program, I mean, looking at the funding sources, in fairness, there's a lot of, a lot of potential funding sources. But, I mean, that one seems like, that one to me seems like one of the biggest kind of standout comments that gets made, and that's probably real that that could happen. This year probably we're good because we've had plenty of rain and things are looking good, but, you know, we get two or three years of kind of not so much rain, then blooms grow, you know, exponentially.
Mr. Mayor, council member Paul me, you know, Paul me, uh, but understanding as this was kind of developed, is there's already programs in place as far as like algae's emergency management, city's emergency management, again. Uh, hopefully this plan will help target some of those existing resources, but also identify those gaps and, again, identify those opportunities to supplement training of equipment and, uh, other regions.
Your honor, one question, Dan, thank you very much, uh, enlightening. What kind of pollution event are we planning for or thinking about, what response would be necessary? Just giving a couple of examples, I guess.
So, you know, talk about those non-point, uh, sources and again, we're talking, uh, you know, management of the land to, uh, prevent, you know, again, sediments, uh, some, uh, again nutrients getting into the water, but the focus of the city really should be those point source, uh, pollution, and that is again spill response, uh, so again, the bridges, the roads that are next to the Otter Tail River, uh, again, some of those larger chemical spilling vents, uh, with a short period of time of notice for the city to react to, shutting intakes off or whatever we needed. So we're, we're talking, uh, probably a few spills.
You know, no different than a railroad, when there's a fuel spill, a train rollover, I mean, there's industries that come up and do that on an emergency basis, is that something that we can rely on? Is that something that, you know, I don't mind the coordination effort going wrong, but, I mean, there's, there's groups out there that just, that's all they do. I mean, if we have a, an issue in a river because of a train tip over, uh, it's a, a fluid, they come in and they grab it.
Yeah, so in the MPCA will have some of those contracts for that emergency services and hopefully this, uh, will help them target and prioritize.
Something was close to the intake, but.
Sure.
Supporting the existing programs, yes, there are programs in existing.
I, I was on the same page, I mean, it'd be a chemical leak, you know, fuel leak, diesel leak from a railroad or a transport.
Our fire department would respond on a limited basis to some kind of a spill or a contaminant, uh, release, but we would rely on the Warhead hazmat team.
Yep, so we're, I mean, the system's built to a degree.
Technically, we would have to be prepared to turn off even if the spill happened on county property, it, because it could eventually hit our water no matter what, I mean, we have to be prepared to react even if the spill doesn't happen within our city limits.
Correct, yeah, that's, I mean, because they shed, you know, the, the system or the area that the water comes from is.
Right.
Way outside of the city. So, I mean, as you say, the most likely event is going to be that, you know, like obviously the truck that fell off the interstate the other day.
Right.
It, it would be that type of event if that was a chemical tanker that got hit and rolled over and went into, you know, the bridge at Wright Lake, so Dan and Hoot Lake.
Or all by Otter Tail, like, I mean, it could be anywhere that feeds this way.
So, and, and most of those carriers are obligated to, they, they all have to have, a, a emergency response team that also would enact immediately, but as you say, our own kind of plan should shut the water off immediately. Right, so there's nothing technically that we need to do in this on Monday evening then?
Yeah, no action right now, I think, uh, we'll put it out for approval.
Yeah.
To the second meeting in August.
Right.
Just so you can have time to digest it.
Right, thank you. Thank you, Dan, for your work. Anything else?
Mayor, I'd just like to, Chad's here in the audience and just say, you know, thanks to you and the staff out there at the water treatment plant. I had the opportunity a couple of years ago, Chad gave me a tour, and I think the last time I was there, I was probably in grade school. Uh, not much has changed. That's a pretty old building, pretty old, and him and the, and their staff out there, um, really do an excellent job keeping that place running and, uh, providing a safe water to drink and to have here in this city. And I sit, I think that's a, a very, um, kind of a humble hero for our community and I really, people like this need to be, have a shout out and, uh, the staff there because they do a lot of work for our community to keep us safe, so thank you, Chad.
I think it's one of those things that people just take for granted.
Exactly.
They can turn the tap on and, and it will flow and it will be clean and safe. So, thank you, Al.
Anthony? I think just for the sake of, uh, conversation, it might be helpful to understand what our costs might be, and I don't want to go down a long wormhole on this one, but just for the sake of conversation, if we were to convert from being a surface water supplied water source to wells, you know, if we spent X number of dollars to just convert our system over so we were dealing with well water and not lake water, river water, versus spending all this money to be prepared for whatever might happen to the surface water, you know, is it a coin flip or would it be a dramatic cost difference one way or the other? My hunch is it's probably less expensive to keep our current system going and have emergency responses in place. On the other hand, if it costs about the same to just go to wells entirely and not have to do all of this protection, well, maybe that would be all right and we'd have the added benefit of no odd smells and tastes twice a year.
Good point, we are.
It might be worth looking at, but, you know, again, I'm not suggesting that we start another study necessarily at great cost, but I just, I think that's a question that people would be very interested in knowing where it might go.
Yeah. Thank you. I think, uh, Monday night on the agenda, can we part? We need to do something about technology in this room, it fails more frequently than anything, and, uh, I think we need to have that discussion of what council would like to see, but I think it's becoming embarrassing the number of times that, you know, this kind of lasts three, four months and it shouldn't be that way. You know, I, I think we, if we have to spend some money, then, you know, we'll, obviously now's a good time to look at that. And I can't say that personally, you know, the previous group that did technology update, I kind of questioned their abilities, you know, but I mean, if there's a power outage and we lose stuff, it should just reboot and come back on. So I think Monday night, let's be, be prepared to kind of see what you want from a technology point of view, um, so that we can then go out and get a quote to what it costs and we can either, we will agree or disagree then to put it in the budget for fiscal twenty-six so that we can get that done. Couple of announcements, uh, city hall meeting, obviously Monday evening, five-thirty, I think Clara mentioned that prior to that, there will be a, a port authority meeting. Uh, next town hall will be the twenty-ninth of July, um, they're all being posted as a quote, a council meeting, so if there are more than four council meetings wish to attend, there's no legal reason they cannot. And then Committee of the Hall on July thirtieth, so with that, thank you for your participation.